Really confusing.
That's right.
Oh, I do?
Yes.
We'll pledge allegiance. To the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's absolutely trapped. You get to run the meeting.
That's right.
Oh, goodie. I have not won. Sorry. Okay, we'll all do a roll call. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Here.
Commissioner Justardens?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner Burnick?
Here.
And Mayor Berry?
Yes, here.
Okay, we're gonna, item B, and we're gonna swear in of the commissioners. City commissioners. Mayor Berry?
The two who just got elected.
Yes. Mayor Berry and Mayor Wilkinson, or Commissioner Wilkinson.
Say Mary. Say Mayor, Mayor, it's on my name.
Uh, I would not provide the swearing-in paperwork.
I didn't see the slip, so I...
Nope, let me go grab the book. Let me grab the book, can you?
I'm trying to go over there so I can get a photo of what went on in the Facebook page.
No, no, thank you.
Well, it's not like we got a newspaper here, so like... Nice to have some positive things on the Facebook page.
Who was the mayor pro temp? Jordan? I've never had occasion to ask.
No? I've always been here.
My nephew was the mayor pro temp once.
You guys don't stand a chance, buddy.
So he resigned.
All right.
We do what we gotta do.
Let's do what we gotta do.
Let me do it.
All right. What do you have for me?
I solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of office of city commissioner.
Of office of city commissioner.
In and for.
In and for.
The city of Munising.
The city of Munising.
The county of Alger.
County of Alger.
The state of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities, I'll help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, I'll help me God.
Congratulations.
Good job, Mary.
Are you here?
I'll vote on it.
Are you here?
Yep, I'll vote in.
Okay.
We had an election last week, we were a little tired.
Yeah, sure. So you still, she still goes on until you've drawn your correct...
Yes, until we get a mayor.
Item C, appoint and swear in a mayor, a mayor pro temp.
You guys still want it?
Oh my gosh.
I, I move that we appoint Commissioner Berry as the mayor, and I ask for acclamation.
I'll say it.
Sorry, I already know. Okay, moved by Commissioner Justardens to appoint Mayor Chris Berry as mayor, seconded by Commissioner Wilkinson. Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you. Guys are willing to let me do this another year, okay.
Mayor for life.
Mayor for life.
Jordan, you still want the job?
Done. Fine.
Okay, I move we appoint Commissioner Prunik as mayor pro temp.
Support.
Still my meeting, or is it Chris's now?
Uh, we need a vote.
Uh, a motion by Commissioner Justardens to appoint Commissioner Prunik as mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Birch. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And now I'm sorry. No, sorry, got on with that.
Okay, let's go to item D, appoint commissioners to committees. Sorry. Uh, excuse me, the Alger Recycling Committee, that is, that, that one is a tough one, is...
Which one?
That, the top one, the Alger.
Alger Recycling?
Is that, or is that just Alger County? Am I getting myself confused, or is that the...
Alger Recycling Committee. It used to be me and Chris Case and, and Jim Islam for 25 years.
Um, do you still wanna be on?
If I remember correctly, wasn't, wasn't, wasn't this switched over to the one that got the six-county effort?
That's what I was thinking.
And, and it's the keypad one, it's not the Alger Recycling effort now, and, and I was not able to do that anymore because of job restrictions.
And I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, I thought you...
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, I thought that you did, um...
I, I agreed to do it, and I, I never followed through on that, I apologize. It was something that was pending, something complicated, and I don't, I'm not ever going.
So, okay. Uh, DDA, looks like that will be me and...
My default.
Um, the new city manager. So I will continue on that, I enjoy that one. Um, Industrial Park, Jordan, are you still, uh, willing?
Yes.
And Brownfield Development Committee, that one, we do have a vacancy on...
I'll take that, if anybody else wants it.
Then are they?
What's that?
Then are they?
They, they're as needed, I believe. I mean, I don't think there's ever been one since I've been here.
The county, is this the county Brownfield Committee?
I, this is what we were just asking.
We don't have a city Brownfield Committee anymore. As far as I know.
That's what I...
They got absorbed into the counties. The city should have a rep on it, though.
So, until we get that figured, I guess, resolved, could we be willing?
I would, certainly. I am, I'm already working with the Brownfield Commission.
Oh, that's true, you are. Okay, buildings, the Lees and Grounds, uh, Jordan?
Awesome.
Alger Park and Rec, Bob, are you still on there?
Sure.
And the Housing Commission?
Uh, I am still there, and the funny thing, they don't consider me a member, they consider me a liaison. I have yet to disabuse them of that notion.
Chris, yes?
Uh, Building and Grounds, looks like we're supposed to have two commissioners?
Two of them, that's...
Yeah.
Or may I hear? Oh, Commissioner Prunik and another commissioner. How often have you met with that?
How many good ones?
I have time if you...
Okay.
Yeah, I can do, I can be on with Jordan if you want.
Sure. Okay, Housing, Planning Commission, Bob, are you, you're still on there?
Yeah.
Prison Liaison, that's me. Uh, Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yeah.
You're still on there, okay. Labor Relations, uh, I'm still willing to be on there, how about you, Jordan?
Okay.
Recreation Committee? Okay, sorry, thank you. Um, Munising Area Partnership, um, I was on there, I've been on there, I will at least stay on there. And the Airport Liaison?
I'm, I'm happy to continue on there, although we have never met. I've talked to Dean about it, and, uh, they don't have any business, so they don't need it, correct?
And now they're, now they're at the bottom, now that there's, that's where the six-county...
No.
This is something different?
No, that's something different, so that's the one that deals with, um, renewable energy growth in Alger County. They need, they need somebody from Munising Government, so...
You still on there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, easy.
So we don't need a motion to this, do we?
I do, I, yeah. I move that we approve the mayor's committee appointments. A support.
Moved by Commissioner Justardens to approve the meeting appointments, seconded by Commissioner Wilkinson. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Um, accept the schedule of the 2025-2026 meetings. Um, it looks like no change, if they look like we will keep them the first Wednesday, third Monday?
I'm, I'm back in the habit of that, you change, you're just gonna confuse me.
I, I will always advocate to not have a meeting on the third Monday, um, just because if we're trying to get more people, and we saw how important it was to have people with the marina here. Um, I really just hate the idea of going up against the school board, the road commission, the county commission, and a whole bunch of neighboring townships all on the same day.
But, you know, I, that was the third Monday that that meeting happened, that was October 20th.
I, I know, but I, I don't...
What, was it Wednesday?
What, the 20th, I think so.
Oh, well, it was the third Monday.
Monday, oh, the 20th, yeah, it would have been Monday.
But I know, I, I, I know that you would like to change that. Any more discussion? I didn't obtain a motion, then.
All right, move we approve the meeting schedule.
A support.
Moved by Commissioner Justardens to approve the meeting schedules for Commissioner Prunik. Um, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Um, I then obtained a motion to adjourn. Uh, organizational meeting.
Make motion to adjourn the organizational meeting, go into the special meeting.
A support.
Uh, moved by Commissioner Birch to adjourn the organizational meeting, supported by Commissioner Prunik. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Okay. Uh, special meeting called to order, all the commissioners will be being seated at 6:10. Any public comment? Hearing none, item C, consent agenda.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll support that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wilkinson, supported by Commissioner Justardens, to approve the consent agenda. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. All right. Um, item D, number one, parcel division application by Tom Carlton. He's selling Scotty's Motel.
Yes.
And, uh...
He's covering out the lot across from...
Yep.
Next to Tom Daniel.
Tom Daniel, yeah, Tom and Junior are wanting to purchase it, so we're just...
That, that was my question.
Yep.
So its intended use?
Yep.
Is, it doesn't say residential or commercial?
It's... What's that?
No.
Um, I would assume, I would assume it's going to be residential.
Because it can be either, I think, where it's located.
Can I say? Yeah.
This is not a planning commission question?
I wondered.
For the divisions of the...
That's what I'm wondering.
I think it's because it's a subdivision of a, of a lot that it has to go before the city commission, right? I assume that's why it's before us.
I don't believe it's a subdivision, though, I think it's a, it's a, and they're separating it from the, um...
Parcel division application.
Yeah.
You know, I've, I've done subdivision issues before, but never a parcel division, I just thought it was...
They're separating it from their tax row, you know, so, and they're planning to sell it, and then the person next to them, I guess, is...
So I don't, I don't even know it, why it would require this action.
That's what it, it appeared to show, that this needs to go to the commission to approve.
It's easy enough to do.
Yeah. It just, um, fewer regulations, okay, and that's what, that's what we looked into.
I've got a question on that. Now, who's gonna own that property?
Tom and Junior.
Tom and Junior Daniels.
They're gonna own it, so they'll own both.
They'll have the full lot, or the full corner there.
Okay.
But it's on Cedar, I'm pretty sure their commercial uses are permitted, if not conditional.
I would think probably conditional, but, uh, it still has to have an application to the plan.
I mean, it's between two motels.
Because they're gonna have to attach, because, um, under the current zoning, it's too small, you know?
Oh, okay, right.
For minimum lot size?
Yeah.
So there's gonna have to be some other action.
It's gonna be combined with the other parcel next to it. What other parcel are you...
You can't stand on it, though.
Yeah.
But they need it to separate.
I have no objection.
Yeah, because Tom and Junior have to, the one parcel, the other half of this parcel, and then...
Thirty-three foot lot.
And they...
It's a separate tax, it's a separate tax.
So are we gonna see a parcel combination application of this, too?
There would be something that comes forward with that, because it can't stand on it, so in pursuit of the current zoning. This is all part of, part, part of their, uh, selling step, yeah.
Well, R B F must have gotten away with red tape, so...
It's a contingent upon adjoining Scotty's Motel property closing on or before Wednesday.
It's, it's supposed to, I believe, it's supposed to be closing.
Okay, it says, it's contingent, right, upon that.
I don't think, I don't know the exact date, but...
I was talking to somebody who, knew somebody who bought it, and I forget who it was.
Kovach.
Kovach, yeah.
Here.
Donna, Donna Skits.
Yep.
All right, well, if there's no objection, I will make a motion that we approve the parcel division as requested.
A support.
Moved by Commissioner Justardens, supported by Commissioner Birch, to approve parcel division application from Tom Carlton. Any more discussion?
I, I still concerned about the intended use, it's not stated on here.
If it's a conditional use for...
Well, conditional on the split, it's not conditional on anything else.
If, if, so, commercial is a conditional use for that lot, it'd have to come before the planning commission, correct?
It's, it's gonna have...
Yeah, it can't be residential, anyway.
After the...
Because it's thirty-three foot lot.
Remember who used to live there, Bob? In the trailer?
Oh, Luke Dollinger, a black living one. Oh, and that dog, remember that dog used to drink beer out of the dish?
Okay.
I'm too old to...
We're moving on the topic here. Let's get back on topic.
Yeah, if I could, I mean, Bob, I, I think what's gonna end up happening is, they need to have the, the separation. Then they're gonna move, you know, to have the property transaction, but anything, if, in order for the new owner, it doesn't matter if someone else bought the property. In order for the new owner to do anything, they're gonna have to come to the planning commission. Whether they, my assumption is they're gonna attach it to the, to the existing property next door, so then it becomes, uh...
A parcel?
Yeah, one, one large area, or one large parcel. But anybody who's, who buys it, if they bought it separate, they can't do anything with it until they come to the planning commission, so there's gonna be action afterwards.
And, yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna speak...
There are fifty-foot lots.
Not speaking for the Daniels, but I, I don't believe they're gonna develop it.
If I remember correctly, a fifty-foot lot is the minimum width for development, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if you're on thirty-three-foot lots, you would have to have two adjacent ones.
That's correct.
But these are fifty-foot lots. So you can build a house on it.
Aye. Okay, we got a motion, and it's for, on the table, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right, that motion carries. Appoint Ryan Fisher and Jennifer Atkinsen to the planning commission.
Ryan Fisher, I don't know.
He's our, he's the base, um, HR person.
Okay. Ryan Fisher, I don't know. Jennifer Atkinsen, I'm acquainted with, she's a woman of good character.
And Ryan is a good guy, he also owns, uh, the Kek, the Cabal. What's that?
The Cabal Lake?
Uh, some, somewhere in there.
The Powell.
Powell Lake, I thought, like...
Aye.
But, yeah, he's, um, he's been here, oh, three years now.
The acceptable choice is due, Bob?
Absolutely.
And then I move we appoint Ryan Fisher and Jennifer Atkinsen to the planning commission.
A support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Justardens, supported by Commissioner Prunik, to appoint Ryan Fisher and Jennifer Atkinsen to the planning commission. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So now we have the first reading to amend the number of, the number of members on the planning commission.
We, we brought this up only because it's, it's, at one time, we, it was, we said we had to have seven, and we were having trouble getting three in the meeting, so we couldn't even get a quorum. So it, it makes sense, we can always have more than five, but it makes sense to go to five.
I didn't say that.
Right.
It says shall consist of five.
Well, um, my, my question is now, with these two new appointees, that makes, does that make six?
Makes six.
Somebody's gotta go.
So...
Or, no, you can have six.
Nope, it does, you can have five. Shall consist of five members.
And this, Ray and I were talking about this earlier, um, this is a first reading, so we can...
Yeah, yeah, you, we can fix it by putting, shall consist of at least five members. And no more than seven?
I would say no more than seven, yeah.
So I would recommend we change the wording to shall consist of at least five members and no more than seven.
Okay, okay.
And then I would ensure that letter B is also adapted appropriately.
Four to six. You got that, Mary?
Mm, working on it.
I can't, I don't understand why people aren't lining up to be on the planning.
No, no, they are.
Glamorous position.
Oh, so it says Minnesota.
Oh, yeah, like Bob has been on the planning.
Been there, done that.
Oh.
And it's got, it's got the 2025, and it says it's the wrong publication.
The administrative news should have come.
Yeah.
Just when you figure out you got something, sad, somebody got it.
Well, what about the best?
Well, the easiest way is to just say the local paper record, and then that way you don't have to, it applies to anything.
On the back, it specifies, Chris was pointing out that it's, uh, was adopted by the commission, Munising, and it's going to be published in Munising News, so change that, too. Or just local publication.
Okay, yeah, change it.
Local publication.
That's, uh, that was Chris's.
I'm pretty sure it has to be newspaper of record.
Yeah, so, so paper records, when you don't have a newspaper, um, go to nearby counties, but the Beacon does count right now, so, but if it was a change in the future...
It doesn't count?
It does count.
It does, it does, like, like Gramm raised paper doesn't count.
Oh, right.
So...
So it should be the Munising Beacon?
Okay, so all right.
Or, or we put Munising Beacon or local paper of record if we don't want these grand names, so that way, it just really just depend the way you want. But it just can't say Munising News.
Because that does not exist.
Yes.
I didn't know, like, that's, when we were in, when I was on the school board, we always had to designate a newspaper.
And because of Munising, the paper, um, it's a paper of record, has to be a down file, I mean.
All right, any more discussion?
No action.
Oh, that's right, it's just a reading. Number, item four, purchase requisition for which is solved for $21,927.
Is that sole source rate, just because there's only one supplier?
Well, it's through my deal, so actually, they, they handle it.
It's a Michigan contract?
Yeah.
Okay. I move we approve the purchase of, uh, salt under the my deal program, in the amount of $1,927.
Uh, it's been moved by Commissioner Justardens, supported by Commissioner Prunik, to approve the bid of $21,827 to compass minerals for the purchase of salt. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Tourist Park rate increase request proposal, I don't think it's out of line, personally.
I don't either, far either.
Right, before, before we get into it, the, uh, the actual site fees, there is a reservation fee on there, increase, and I don't think, I don't know if you guys know what that is, but we, we have Camp Spot as our reservation host online. So they charge a $2 reservation fee, and that gets passed on to the customer. Well, in February, they raised it to 225. So, uh, Kristen suggests we go to 225 rather than to 4, because we can't really justify where the rest of that money's gonna go, to keep it where it is, and if it does go up in February again, then I can come back to you with, with that raise at that point.
You recommend it 225?
225, yeah.
Instead of 4?
Yeah. So that's what that is, and I don't know if you guys understand what the, uh, what the site improvement fee is?
Yeah, it used to be 50 cents.
So, yeah, my table was a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Um, what that does is that money goes into a separate account, improve the campground. Okay, that's where we paid for the bathrooms out of, and that's where the, of any tables or stuff like that.
Camp project.
Fire pits, yeah, any, any type of improvement, matching grants, comes out of that account.
Is that, is that a monthly fee, or is that just...
It's per site.
Per site?
Yeah.
Per rental?
Mm-hmm, per rental. We're roughly about 18,000 sites a year, if that's you're trying to do the math.
Okay, yeah, I, I can do that, I just wonder, make sure.
No, but I, I don't think these are, I don't think they're reasonable, I don't know.
Like front property?
Right, I mean, like, less, I don't really get a whole lot of questioning of price.
Is there, is there someplace where you can do, you can get price comparisons, or is it, you know?
I, I called, uh, Billy.
You can get all the state?
I got Billie's prices from him, I called Stan Drew, got his prices from him, um, you know?
Just boiling the local campground?
Yeah, I mean, it's kinda like anything else, if you, you know, some places that don't have lake or water, you know, less desirable places.
The ones gonna grab the pit.
These are less, uh, expensive than market tourist park. We finally, we finally bought a camper, and so, you know, we've been camping more and more, but either they're less or very comparable.
Mm-hmm, if you look at the color code map, it shows you what each site has. So if there's some prices, you look at those, the, the yellow ones are all full hookup, which means they have sewer. Those are the $51 ones, and the green ones are just lakefront or pull-throughs, those have electric and water, those are 46. Yeah.
I'll be, stupid question.
Hmm?
When you're talking about $5, are these prices on the back with $5 included, or are they, the, these are the base?
That's last year's prices.
Okay, all right.
So it'll be $5 up from those.
It's, okay. But even, like, Rippling River, I know that that's apples and oranges, but they're 65 for a full hookup.
Yeah.
Now, it's a little better.
And it is money that comes into the city that does not come out of the pockets of munitions taxpayers.
Yep, in terms of paying for it. Any more discussion? I didn't obtain a motion.
I make a motion we approve the, uh, the new tourist park rental rates. A support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wilkinson, supported by Commissioner Prunik, to approve the new, um, tourist park rate increase request.
The reservation fee is 225?
And reservation seasonal starts December 1st. And they have them for next year, so it's, it's almost go time.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Number six, hockey, Munising Hockey Association agreement, we do this every year.
Is this any increase, Pat?
No.
Same as last year?
And everything seem to work?
Yeah, ice is on, yeah, the prices of work were great, um, yeah, since we have this lumps rebuilt, like, I'm not losing glen call, like, it's, yeah, things are...
Awesome.
Knock on wood, compared to like Pagani, we're in good shape.
There was no competing group or anything for concessions or being part of this, it's staying across the board, okay?
Yeah, everything is as it been.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't assume it, but it's one of those things where it's just like, all right, if you wanna build a check.
Any more discussion? Do you approve the motion?
Make the motion that we enter into the agreement regarding ice time and concession rental with Munising Hockey Association.
I'll support.
Moved by Commissioner Birch, supported by Commissioner Justardens, to approve, paraphrase, the Munising Hockey Association annual agreement. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item six, drinking water lead service line replacement.
Kelly.
So I guess the, the short version of this, the state kinda reshuffled some funding, you guys have been, three years in a row, you've been applying for this funding, they finally, you know, allocate some additional funding. The offer was made for $2.77 million with a 50% grant match on that, so the state is offering 1.35 million to do the last of your lead service line replacements. Three different terms for the long, 20-year, 30-year, 40-year, um, good interest rate, I think you got 2%? Do you go with the, decide to proceed with the 40-year plan, we've got an annual payment, principal and interest of $50,630.
As the 30-year?
Or that's the 40-year. If you decide to proceed with this, uh...
We really have no choice, do we?
If you do, I, I mean, my recommendation would be to proceed with it, right?
Well, it's mandated.
You will have to replace these service lines either way, this option, the offer, I pay for.
I, question, where's the $2,770,000 figure come from?
Two million.
The two million?
Or two million?[1791.02]
Estimate, I mean, based on other lead service line projects. In all fairness, it's probably a conservative estimate, but.
Yes, it should be.
Um, my, my question, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit on this item, the engineering, is that part of the two point seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and something I read in your report, Ray, it said replacement of the lines, the public part of the line and the private part?
Whatever's out there, some of them are going to be, we're going to start the water main, go all the way inside the house to the meter. Some of them might be copper from the main to the curb stop, and then we just have to do the private side from the curb stop into the meter.
Okay, so, does the homeowner bear any cost here?
Sure.
That's good to hear. And I did the math, it comes out to about eleven thousand five hundred dollars for the one hundred and eighty-six cuts we have to make. Trenches we have to dig, cuts we have to make in sidewalk and street to get to the main.
Correct.
That's a hundred and eighty-seven patches cement and asphalt.
There is a potential, I mean, we, we can't dictate the business way, we really just got to get to a contractor. There are some now, especially, we're starting to work in UP, they can direction drilling.
Into the tap?
Yep. Overs, yeah, overs are.
They can drill into the tap?
No, they'll, they'll do one hole, you'll get a hole at the main, but from there, they can run it.
Oh, okay.
Be on the.
Drive, drive, drive the sidewalks.
But they'll skip past a lot of sidewalk, they usually don't damage curb, I mean, it depends on where the water mains located. Either way, the yard doesn't get torn up, it's, it's a lot cleaner.
Yeah, okay.
That would actually.
And they can hit the house in the same spot?
Yeah, they, tell them to come right in the basement, cut a square hole right in the, the floor, draw it in, hit that mark, dig down and pull the copper real.
Wow. Got it pretty accurate.
So, this, we do, unfortunately, we do need to make a decision tonight.
Right. We don't have to decide on the financing. Kirsten, you recommend twenty, thirty, or forty years? Ray?
I think, me personally, I, I've always liked to try and stretch those out to the forty, you know, from a cash flow standpoint.
I don't think I've ever done one that's less than forty.
No. I mean, your asset value is, is well over forty, so I mean, it, it, that's just my recommendation, and it's strictly on cash flow.
Well, two percent.
Two percent then.
And if, you know, I mean, yeah, cash flow, it's fifty versus, I mean, I know it's only eleven thousand dollars for ten, ten years, but, um, I think it makes it more valuable to, you know?
It'll be less, uh, when you start going through your rate analysis, I mean, it'll be less of an impact, um, when you evaluate it on rates.
And we'll incorporate that when we do the fee scheduling, I assume. Alright. So, we just need to make a decision whether we want to, I mean, it's really not a decision.
We just, we're moving forward, that would like this, um, we're approving grant applications, correct?
Sure, well, what we came here today is if you can authorize the manager to let you in on what you're going to proceed with it, that's what we're.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just looking for a, a direction that, you know, we want to pursue, the grant documents, those will come.
Correct.
Alright.
Okay.
I would move we authorize the manager to proceed with, um, the funding allocation for fiscal year twenty-six for the city of Munising LS, LR.
Yep, lead service line replacement.
I'll support.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Distardins, supported by Commissioner Wilkinson, to approve Coleman Engineering, professional engineering services, uh, to proceed with the lead service line replacement project. Is that for?
Yep.
Um, any more discussion?
Quick, quick question, do we, should it be in there for the two seven seven, two point seven, two million seven hundred and seventy thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's here, proceeding with the whole thing, so it's.
Yep. Proceeding, okay. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Item nine, commission meeting Monday, November seventeenth, to have it or reschedule, it's only a week from now.
We got, we got a service contractor here.
Did I miss something? Oh, I think I missed that.
Professional engineering circle, big one, too.
Yeah, so, sorry, okay. I'm engineering, wait, I did the wrong one, alright. Miss Coleman Engineering Company Professional Engineering Services for lead line replacement. In the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty.
So, professional services, it doesn't require competitive bidding. Coleman Engineering has done the project from the inception.
Correct.
How much have we spent on this so far?
On this particular?
No, no, on, on the whole lead service line, it's going on, been going on for years.
Yeah, I mean, TMF had a part to play in that, and you had a part to play on the, the last M dot project. Have you any guess?
Bob.
A lot.
And this, to clarify, that this is rolled into the two point seven seven million.
That's correct.
That's the one that brung it, that's what I was saying.
I guess I'll say part of the reason for approaching this now is typically the funding allocations were gone through over a month ago. So, you proceeding with the project, we're a month behind on beginning our component, so, if you decide to proceed, we would appreciate it.
So, it's a work order we're approving.
Correct.
I move we approve the work order for Coleman Engineering Company for the L S L, lead, lead service line replacement. Any amount of three, three hundred and eighteen thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars. I'll support.
It was by Commissioner Distardins, supported by Commissioner Wilkinson, to approve the formulary professional engineering services proposal in the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, any more discussion?
Not to exceed that.
Yeah, okay. Got that in there? Is that good?
What's that?
Bryce is adding not to exceed that.
Yes.
Okay, with that caveat. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, when you guys going to open an office in here?
Now you can speak.
When you going to open an office in here?
Try to get an open one, that's not allowed.
Okay, item nine, now the next meeting, uh, commission meeting Monday.
I will not be here.
Um, recommending, recommending that we move it out to the twenty-fourth, a week from next Monday. Does that work for Andy, everybody?
Twenty-seventh is Thanksgiving. It works for me, um, unless I haven't started a year yet.
Just, uh, gives us time between, you know, it's two and a half, yes.
I can do the twenty-fourth.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, I do obtain a motion to move that to.
I'm going to make the motion to move the meeting to November seventeenth.
From, um, from November seventeenth to the twenty-fourth, sorry. Yeah, cool.
Okay, by a second?
I'll say.
Okay, so, it's moved by Commissioner Prunick, supported by Commissioner Wilkinson, to move our next meeting date from November seventeenth to November twenty-fourth. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Make more from adjourn?
Nope. Uh, any public comments?
Oh, sorry about that. Sorry about that, public.
I'd like to commit Mary, um.
Yes.
Lingering it right off the get.
Um, actually, I, I have a public comment.
Be better if she had a tape recorder, she can have it right all the time.
This is paragraph. Yep, um, it's a written public comment from, um, Mr. Joseph Case regarding, uh, fold slips. Uh, the primary purpose for this message is to provide for you, us, my written public comment on the city's vote to raise slip rental rates. I have attached this document for the record, so I would like to place this, this document in the place. Okay, Bob.
I'm going to move adjourn.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Wilkinson, supported by Commissioner Prunick, to adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.